Good evening, folks. And thank you for viewing the July 19th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Our first item this evening is a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Weot tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Weot language as gudini, meaning over in the redwoods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments have removed the Weot and other indigenous people from their land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Weot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you'd like to join us, please stand for the flag salute. All right. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman?
Here.
All present.
So this is a reminder, if you wish to make comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you're here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting comment. If you're logged onto Zoom, you can click Raise Your Hand when it's time for public comment on the item you wish to speak. And if you're on your phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six to unmute. For each item, we take in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you want to comment, please either line up or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is being accepted for that item. We'll start our evening with our two ceremonial matters. Tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month, and Vice Mayor Matthews will read this proclamation.
All right. My favorite month, the city of Arcata has proclamation recognizing July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation makes lives and communities better now and in the future, and whereas it is established through statewide public opinion research that 98% of California households visit a local park at least once a year, 2 in 3 households visit a park once a month, 50% of households participate in an organized recreation program, and most park use is with family and friends. And whereas Arcata has emerged from COVID-19 pandemic to fully offer recreation programming, support more special event activities than pre-pandemic levels, and construct a variety of significant park improvement projects at Redwood Park, Bloomfield Park, Carlson Park, and the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary. And whereas residents value our local parks for access to outdoor spaces as a place where everyone can play and be active, exercise, enjoy group sports, and have access to serenity and inspiration of nature while preserving and protecting our natural, historic, and cultural resources. And whereas the residents of Arcata, including children, youth, families, adults, seniors, businesses, community organizations, and visitors, benefit from the wide range of parks, trails, open spaces, sports fields, tennis courts, facilities, and programs, including community-wide special events, camp programs, and health and wellness opportunities provided by the Recreation and Parks Division. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month. The council reminds the community that parks make life better and urges all its residents to enjoy Parks and Recreation's benefits of enriching our lives and the experience of our visitors while adding value to our homes and neighborhoods. Dated July 19, 2023, signed by Sarah Schaefer, Mayor. And accepting this is Sheldon Heath, our committee chair.
Thank you. Okay. Our next proclamation is a proclamation in support of the protection of the Southern Resident Orcas and their ecosystem. And today, we have Isabel Shirok, Cal Poly student, and also a member of the Legal Rights for the Sailor Sea here to accept it. So proclamation in support of the protection of Southern Resident Orcas and their ecosystem. Whereas the Southern Resident Orcas are culturally, spiritually, and economically important to the people of the Pacific Northwest and the world, and whereas despite legal protections for nearly two decades, the population continues to decline and is critically endangered with approximately 75 individuals left in the wild. And whereas the Orca's survival is dependent on healthy and functioning ecosystems, their diet composed exclusively of fish, and whereas over 20 countries, dozens of local communities in the United States, and several tribal governments have recognized that nature has inherent rights and that human society has the responsibility to protect and steward nature in a matter that is consistent with our interconnected relationships. And whereas the rights of Southern Resident Orcas include but are not limited to the right to life, autonomy, free and safe passage, adequate food supply from naturally occurring sources, and historic foraging areas, and freedom from conditions causing physical, emotional, or mental harm, including a habitat degraded by noise, pollution, and contamination. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata supports actions by local, state, federal, and tribal governments that secure and effectuate the rights of Southern Resident Orcas and of their ecosystem upon which they depend. Dated July 19, 2023, and signed by myself. So Isabel, if you're here, I can come get...
So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for giving me this opportunity to speak in support of my proclamation. My name is Izzy. I'm an intern for Northwest Animal Rights Network, and I'm also a member of Legal Rights for the Sailor Sea, who was founded by former Arcata member Dr. Chris Kevorkian. I'm also a junior at Cal Poly Humboldt. I major in wildlife ecology and conservation. I came here today to speak on behalf of the Southern Resident Orcas, not because they can't speak for themselves, but also because their voices are often not heard over the voices of humans. Today, we stand at a tipping point, and you guys can help tip the scales in favor of preservation over decimation. This species, composed of highly perceptive individuals who are adept at problem-solving and display complex emotional relationships, is critically endangered, with only 75 individuals remaining in the wild. To make the situation more dire, the chinook salmon that they rely on for food are also endangered, mainly due to overfishing dams all along their home rivers and pollution. We humans are creating problems for the Southern residents, so it's only fair for us to be the ones to rectify them. It is not too late to save such an iconic West Coast species, and here today, we are all taking a step towards their preservation. Our ultimate goal is to take this issue to legislation, and by giving us your support here today, you have helped make our case much more potent. So thank you.
Thank you, Izzy. All right. That takes us to our next item on our agenda tonight, which is a report by commission or committee. And so this evening, we have our annual report from the Parks and Recreation Committee. Take it away.
Thank you so much. Once again, my name is Sheldon Heath, and I am a Parks and Rec Committee member. The proclamation was wonderful. Thank you so much. It really summed up a lot of what I was going to say here tonight, so I'm going to make this very quick. This is my 13th or maybe 14th report that I've seen as a committee member, and I'd just like to take a moment to give thanks and recognize the massive amount of work and organization that goes into putting this document together. I hope and I'm sure the council realizes how lucky we are to have this group of talented and hard-working staff to help create a community with our people, our parks, and our programs. Thank you so much, staff. So quickly, I'd just like to highlight some things in this report. Like what was already said, the reopening of recreational programming has gone very well. The Recreation Department has exceeded pre-pandemic programming opportunities for our community. This includes pop-up programming in Valley West, such as the circus at Carlson Park, a horse basketball tournament in Valley West Park, and as I heard one community member put it, "the cutest bike rodeo they had ever seen at Carlson Park," which was done in partnership with CUNY. Also in Valley West, if you haven't gone and seen the murals in Valley West Park, including the one on the basketball court, I'd recommend you go take a look. They are fantastic. Outside of Valley West, a couple of highlights are the completion of Shea Park exercise and play equipment, and what I think was a very successful community outreach for the design and planning of the Bloomfield Neighborhood Park. That's going to be a gem. Once again, thank you to the city staff and volunteers, and a big thank you to the city council for your support of the Parks and Recreation programming. Please remember, when you're making decisions about the future of Arcata, that we really can help create a community through people, parks, and programs. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I don't know if any other council members have any questions about the report, but just a big thank you to you and the whole committee and staff for putting together, again, such a comprehensive report, too. There's a lot of great information in there, so thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, Sheldon. I just really did want to give a shout out to you all for in appreciation of all the dedication that you guys have done, the committees, staff, your liaisons. We all are very grateful for all of the members of the liaisons who serve all of our committees, but you guys have brought a lot of fun things, as you mentioned, to Valley West. The bike rodeo was a great success, as you mentioned, the circus. We also had a lot of pop-ups, so we appreciate that gave some summer fun for the residents, which was the horse basketball and the Ink Peoples Project Rebound that you had mentioned, the basketball court, and also the murals that were done. Workshops with the mural man were all community-led, which were really giving the people a voice. This is what they had asked for, and so it came to fruition, so it was super exciting for the residents out there. And we really appreciate all of the ongoing support and upcoming events that are coming, so thank you for all of the work, and super excited about the groundbreaking happening at Carlson Park, probably at the end of this month.
Yeah, it's going to be great.
Great. Thank you again.
Okay, well, thank you, Sheldon. All right. So that'll take us to early oral communications, and so this 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So if you are here to speak about something related to the general plan or the Gateway Area Plan, I would please ask you to hold those comments till we get to that item, so other folks that are here to comment on non-agenda things have their chance, but you'll have three minutes on that item later. So no pursuant to the Brown Act. Council members cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. And at the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements, and supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. So speakers will be limited to two minutes at this time, so if you have one of those cards, please make your way to the front for your comment. Or if you are online, please raise your hand on Zoom or press star nine to raise your hand on the phone. All right.
Shout out to everybody who showed up in support of the Linear Park. Thank you. Hello to staff and council. My name is James Becker, and I'm presenting to you an update and scan copies of the petition for L Street Pathway to become a permanent linear park. I'm happy to report the number of signers are up over 1,000 and counting from the paper position and the online one at arcatalinerpark.org. The petition reads as follows: We support the existing L Street bicycle pedestrian pathway to be officially designated as a linear park from Alliance Road to Samoa Boulevard, and that this linear park be preserved and enhanced as a green space for recreation, play, and community. We also support the spoken recommendation of the Chair of the Arcaded Transportation Safety Committee at its August 2, 2022 meeting. Quote, "Revised the circulation plan that eliminates L Street as being considered for new streets and car traffic. This area is recommended to become a car-free linear park that prioritizes people." A common sentiment has been shared while gathering signatures from the community. The best use for the L Street Rails with Trails Corridor is to be preserved for future residents, visitors, travelers, as a linear park. The worst possible outcome would be pave over large percentage of open spaces for an additional through road. Signers include a broad spectrum of community members, from Arcata residents to Humboldt Bay Area, and numerous council members, committees, commission members, and in addition to assembly members and supervisors. A common appreciation for L Street is its potential and its simplistic beauty. It's a diamond in the rough that shouldn't be squandered on a couplet. I ask you to preserve L Street and make it a unilateral safety improvements on K Street. Thank you.
All right. So thank you, Jim, but I'm going to, again, ask, rethink if you're in line. Please wait if you have a comment that is related to Gateway Area, which includes the L Street couplet, for when we are on that item. So this is for items not on the agenda. So we will be, you know, having a presentation on that this evening. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on this tonight. My name is Pat Carr. I have kind of a big ask for each of you. Earlier this month, I sent you a letter to each of you, city council members, signed by 23 local residents, asking the city to write Assembly Member Jim Wood, asking his support of SB 252, a bill being considered in the Assembly's Committee on Public Employment and Retirement. SB 252 has already passed the state senate, but it faces a tough fight in the assembly. The bill is authored by Senator Lena Gonzalez of Long Beach. It would require that Cowper's and Cowsters, which, as you know, are the two largest public employee retirement funds in the nation, stop investing in fossil fuel projects. That would be a huge win for the climate. Right now, those funds have nearly $15 billion invested in coal, oil, and natural gas, and I don't think any of us see that as the basis of a secure retirement anymore. This is important to you on the city council and to all Arcata residents, because we've shown a commitment to halting climate change. We've retrofitted buildings with solar panels and heat pumps, encouraged residents to bike and walk when they can. We've got community forests sequestering carbon. And of course, Arcata residents voted for an earth flag, not a scorched earth flag. But all this city's efforts against climate change can easily be undone with the $15 billion in fossil fuels from these funds. Assemblyman Wood has not taken a position on the bill. Please, I ask you to place this item on your agenda at your earliest opportunity and ask Assemblyman Wood to support SB 252. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
I'm dropping things, but I'm not picking them up because my back is out. My name's Joanne McGary, and I did send an email to the city council and the city manager yesterday, I do believe, and I didn't hear back from any of you, which sometimes I do hear back from one of you. I guess it's sort of important for me to know that you at least saw it, so just some type of "saw" your email or "see you send an email" would be appreciated. But I was in that email talking about four major things: ceremonial matters, staff reports, the climate emergency that the world is facing, and some lack of what I think is transparency and maybe even honesty in what's going on behind closed doors at the city in regards to some issues that, in the public forums, seem to be going in one direction, and then I come to understand they might be changing. So I just wanted some clarification on that. But I'm going to speak tonight about the climate emergency. As we all know, the world is in hot water, or hot air, perhaps, and we here in Arcata can do so much more as a small, little college town on the north coast of California to thwart what's coming worldwide by taking our own individual action as a community to stop fossil fuels, including the landscaping tools that the city consistently uses on the ballfields, the plaza, and out trimming the hedges. That is not to be tolerated anymore. Our draft climate action plan for the county says, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. That's the way you can do it. I want some solid action with our city right now on climate. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Good evening. I'm Fred Wise of ArcataOne.com. Last week, we held a second community meeting at the Arcata Playhouse. There were 73 people who came. At the May 16 city-sponsored meeting, when the pre-assigned topics for discussion were announced, about 1/3 of the people there then walked out. I felt there was a need for a wider area community meeting. We're going to have a series of meetings that'll take place on the first Tuesday of each month, August 1, September 5, October 3, and then after that. For myself, in speaking with dozens of people, I find many people still have not heard about expansion plans in Arcata. Many others seem to have the view that the city is going to do whatever they want to do, regardless of what people say, which I disagree with. Another group thinks that nothing is really going to happen for some years from now. But a very large group, who I meet and talk with, really, really, really do not like what they see. For those of you watching from home, everyone is invited to these meetings. You can get more information on ArcataOne.com. You can write to me, and I'm happy to speak with anyone on the phone. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred. Do we have anybody else hoping to comment in person on items not on the agenda before we move over to Zoom? All right. Do we have anybody on Zoom waiting to comment?
We have no online public comment.
All right. No online comments on Zoom. All right. Well, then, we will keep moving on to get through to the agenda item many folks are waiting for. All right. So that takes us to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are...
I've invited you up to the podium.
And again, for items not on the agenda, so if it is related to Gateway, or L Street couplet, or anything like that, we're going to hold off on this.
Okay. Thank you very much for hearing from us. We don't feel listened to. There are 1,000, over 1,000 people now who have signed the petition. We don't feel like our representatives represent us anymore. If you have that many people signing a petition in your community who care about this issue, and it's really important to keep the open spaces in our community, to keep some of the parks, and not just build a concrete jungle, so to speak, you know? And you've had so much focus on the Gateway Plan and very little on the general plan until recently, until, you know, the last few weeks during the summer when everyone's gone. Was that by design? I don't know, but what I want to tell you is that you're not listening to your community, and we are paying attention. We're noticing that, and you really have to start paying attention yourselves. And what I really want to tell you is that this is one of the most important issues, the L Street Corridor, and there are communities all over the world who are creating linear parks, and they're beautiful, and they invite people in, and they're greenways. They're not truck thoroughfares. They're greenways. They make people feel like they're in nature and like they have a respite from all the urban environment. So I'm just asking you to consider that this is something that the community wants and take it seriously. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, I don't like cutting people off, but if you're going to talk about the L Street couplet, please hold that comment until we're on that agenda item. This is for matters not on the agenda, so if you want to talk about divesting from fossil fuels or gas lawn mowers, that's great. Okay. But if you want to talk about the Gateway and the general plan, please hold those comments. All right. Thank you. Okay. So now we're going to move, and you'll get three minutes later. It's better than two minutes now, I think, but... Okay. So that's going to move us to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of any of these items, and if discussion is required, that item can be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members and members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So item A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of June 21, 2023. Item B, our biweekly report on disbursements. Item C, approve memorandum of understanding between Humboldt County and the city of Arcata for regional edible food recovery program manager position, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item D, award a contract in the amount of $217,900 to SHN for engineering, design, and construction management services for the Arcata Ballpark Improvement Project, and authorize the city manager to increase the contract amount up to $10,895, 5% for a total of $228,795,000, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item E, approve the project plans and award a construction contract for the Bloomfield Park Improvement Project to Hooven &amp; Company Incorporated in the amount of $39,037, and authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $3,903.70, 10%, for a total not to exceed $42,940.70, and allow for any unforeseen contingencies, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And item F, amend the contract in the amount of $30,960.73 to JHD Incorporated for professional services for environmental documents, design, plans, specifications, and estimates for the old Arcata Road Improvement Project, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. So are there any council members that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? All right. Anything from staff or any members of the public? If you do want to remove an item from consent, please come up to the podium to do so. All right. Then I will need a motion for the consent calendar.
So are we to move for adoption of the consent calendar?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks. And then we will fly right by old business and into new business. So item A under new business is to conduct a public hearing to hear objections or protests from landowners listed on the report of 2022 lien letter recipients of delinquent garbage accounts and fees, and make revisions or corrections to the report as the council deems just, after which adopt Resolution Number 234-02, confirming the report of 2022 delinquent garbage account fees for lien. And we will have a staff report from Environmental Services Deputy Director Emily Benve.
Good evening, council and community members. The item before you this evening is a routine annual item where Recology regularly sends both customers and owners of properties who are delinquent, aka behind in their monthly payments, a letter. They send those letters every other month, sometimes every month, notifying folks when they're behind on payments. And then after the calendar year ends, we go through a process with Recology where we get the account numbers and the amounts that have continued to be delinquent from the previous calendar year, which ends up becoming liens on properties that gets passed on to the assessor in August of the year. And so this part of the process is we notify all customers and owners who have delinquent accounts that their amounts are delinquent. They have an opportunity to protest those amounts tonight before you, and then if those amounts are not resolved or paid, then they get moved forward to the assessor's office to be placed as liens on their properties. Excuse me. This year, I took a look at the list of delinquent accounts compared to last year, and we have a pretty comparable number of accounts that are delinquent for what we see typically year over year. We have about a $10,000 increase in the overall amount, and that's primarily due to one account holder who has a really large outstanding bill that's $8,000 or so. So all of that is to say that, in general, we're pretty on track with what we see year over year. We got pretty few calls in terms of folks who are unsure what they're getting letters for, or how they can pay, or property owners that have changed hands, so overall, it's been a pretty routine process, and we are ready to move forward if the council makes recommendation.
All right. Do we have any questions from the council before I take it out to public comment? All right. Let's take it out to public comment. Anybody here in person to comment on delinquent garbage bills or online?
There's no online public comment.
All right. Well, then, I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 234-02, confirming the report of the 2022 delinquent garbage account fees for lien.
I'll stand for that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Atkins Salazar and a second by Councilmember Stillman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks. That moves us on to item B, which is a public hearing for the closeout of Arcata's Community Development Block Grants, CBDG 17-CDBG-12017, accomplishments, disencumberance, and acceptance of two planning-only activity reports. Take it away, Director Wyeth.
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and council members. This one is kind of a mouthful. It's a big action, but it's really just reporting out on the 2017 grant that we received, amended, and added funds, and then got extended to complete the projects. Most of these projects were ongoing through COVID, and so there were a number of changes that happened during that timeframe. that happened during that timeframe. And so the recommendation, I won't read it to you, but that's the action that we'd like you to take. So I'll let you read it back to me when you're ready to make a motion. On the second page, packet page 132, you'll note a breakdown of the award amounts, the amounts that were funded through program income. And notably, I think there was some interest in the amounts that were unused and be disencumbered. Now, I do want to put a, you know, special note on, on this piece or draw your attention to this because, you know, of course, we don't like to disencumber funds. That means we're giving the funds back to the state or not drawing on those. But the amount of funds that we're disencumbering is roughly equal to the amount of funds that the state awarded us in addition to what the original contract amount was. We were hoping that we were going to be able to do a little bit more with the, the UV system for the wastewater treatment plant than we were actually able to do. And those were completely outside of our control based on, you know, supply timelines and the time that it took to ramp that project up. We funded a number of other activities, including all of the economic development supplemental activities that were, that occurred through, you'll see on the bottom of the page there, there were a number of...
I'm just doing sound. You're good.
Okay. I'm getting the thumbs up from the city manager. That's, that's a good thing. There were a number of economic development projects that we worked on. Many of these were associated with our business loan program that we, again, ramped up real quickly through COVID to try and help businesses make ends meet through that, that pandemic. Overall, you know, I think the city can feel, you know, proud of the work that we did with this. It included the, some of the initial work, the infill market study for the Gateway Area Plan and general plan amendments that we were able to accomplish during this timeframe. And we've included samples of those work products along with resolutions to, for the city council to formally adopt them. Former city councils did adopt them, but not by resolution. So we're bringing that for you by resolution to satisfy CDBG requirements. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have about the, the accomplishments. And one of the points of having this is a public hearing to ensure that, you know, anyone in the public who wishes to make comment on the, the accomplishments and closeout report may do so. So with that, be happy to answer any questions you might have and look for a motion that includes the lengthy motion on the first page of the staff report.
I just want to say, like, this agenda item gave me a really good opportunity to reread through the infill study, and it brought up a lot of questions when I had rereading it. I don't think a lot of them are appropriate to talk about now, but I've written down two pages of things that might be appropriate to talk about during study sessions, so I won't go into it now. But, um, yeah, it was an interesting reread, and it brought up a lot of interesting points for me, both about what's happened before and what we're going to do moving forward. I do have one question that I will ask about these program income-funded activities. Do you have to apply for that? How do we decide who gets that money?
Yeah. So the, the individual activities to the business owners that you see where we spent, you know, much of the money, those were application-based programs. Folks had to come forward and demonstrate that they satisfied the program requirements. And, and then we'd go through the underwriting, and when we were done with the underwriting, we'd be able to, you know, make those loans. For the other activities you see here, the rehabilitation multi-unit residential, that was the Arcata Gardens project, the planning-only community development, no activity delivery, that was another city plan that we did. And then there was some general administration that we put program income to. The way that CDBG ran their program income at the time when this grant was active was that if you had additional activities, or if you had program income, you would add supplemental activities, is what they call them, that were above and beyond the activities that you'd applied for to ensure that you could draw those funds down and so that you could draw down grant funds. And so that's kind of how we balance that.
Thank you.
I was just curious on the economic development Cafe Phoenix. We found out like that the Big Blue Cafe had employee retention requirements, and it was met, and the loan was forgiven. And it looks like we were able to, the vegan micro enterprise grant was able to repair damages. Do we have any updates for Earthly Me or Body Free and how that worked out for their strategic marketing and, yeah?
I don't have those details with me at this time.
And I was just looking at, I was part of the Planning Commission when we did the housing element. And I know that so much has happened since then. We were in the midst or in the height of the pandemic, and this was pre-pandemic. We're going to do another update sooner than later to reflect what's really been happening in the housing element portion of that.
The housing elements are on a state-mandated cycle.
Yeah. I understand that. I guess I was just wondering that so much has happened while we're not required to do it. Cal Poly Humboldt has expanded. We have an influx with regards to fire and climate refugees. Just so much has happened since 2019, and we will be waiting. When is that supposed to be, when we would update it again?
2027.
Okay. It'd be great if we could maybe do it even a, I don't know.
I think...
I mean, that's a lot of work. I understand that.
I think a lot of the work that we're doing right now with the general plan is kind of reevaluating those needs and reassessing those needs. So I think you'll have an opportunity to do that through that process.
So we'll be writing it as we go, and by the time we hit the 2027, we'll have done all our work anyway.
I wouldn't say that, no. I would like to say that, but I don't think I can.
Okay. Thanks.
But I do see what you're talking about, Kimberly. Like, the RENA numbers are probably all different and stuff like that, and I'm sure that that's something that's going to be addressed as we move forward with the general plan, Chris.
Yeah. Well, just to add, the housing group that I'm in, we are working, and sometimes Director Loyah is part of that group as well. And we've had someone from the Department of Finance, we've got someone from the Department of Finance coming to talk to us about how, how the numbers are created, because we did already meet with somebody from, it was HCD that came? Yeah. Because the, though, they show our population to decline, and I think we all know that's not what's happening. And so we're going to, we're trying to find out. Lots of communities have these same concerns. Where do these numbers come from? And how could we maybe make them more accurate? So, and then I did, I don't have a question, but I wanted to say regarding the Arcata multifamily rehabilitation project, I do have a family that I visit there, and it makes me smile whenever I go in, and the courtyard has now been converted into a really awesome playground for the kids, because there is a great courtyard in the middle of those apartments. And so now there's a playground. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. That was a great project. It was actually a probably 10-years-deferred project that we didn't have funding for when we did the original rehabilitation. So, yeah, we were happy to be able to assist that project. I'll note too, with the, with the housing element, just briefly, that the housing element numbers can be viewed as sort of a floor, not a ceiling. And so local jurisdictions can plan for, you know, you know, for, for more than what is required through the RENA.
You, you have your deputy director here. Does she want to say anything?
Oh, she's, I don't know. Does she?
No, I just want to apologize for being late, and if there's anything that I can answer on the staff report, I'd be happy to. I don't know if David talked about the disencumberance or kind of the reasons why we disencumbered, but apologize for being late.
Thank you, Jen. All right. If there's no other questions from the council, an important part of this item is to open up a public hearing to consider the closeout of the 17 CDBG 12017 grants. So that means we shall open this up for public comment, per public hearing. So if you would like to comment on the CDBG, please come up to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Fred Wise. First, thank you to staff for the management of the CDBG funds and all the work that that entails. There's no requirement that we look at the housing element or update it, but we might consider an informal review. It was adopted three and a half years ago. We're just about halfway through the eight-year housing element cycle. And as has been pointed out, much has changed since 2019. Three and a half years ago was pre-COVID, pre-Cal Poly expansion, and pre-California's SB 9 Act and other measures. The housing crisis in Arcata has certainly worsened since then, and this housing element does not reflect this. This element shows a population growth scheduled for Arcata for the 10 years from 2020 to 2030 as only 375 people, one-fifth of 1% per year. The figures from our Community Development Department now show an exponential increase of 1.5% per year over 10 years. We're not looking at 300 or 400 people. We're looking at 4,000 or 5,000 people over the next 10 years by 2030, seven years from now. That is 10 times as many people as are listed in the housing element. In 2019, housing prices were about $370,000. Today, about $500,000. A one-bedroom apartment in 2019 was under $900. Today, over $1,200. There's 25 implementation measures that are listed. Some have timeframes that, dates that have already passed. I think a review is called for to determine what's useful in this document and what's obsolete and not of any value to us. On the infill market study, I found that very interesting. It's two and a half years old. I'll note, there is a section on the Gateway Plan, but it's called a specific plan in that study. Now, this is just a study, I understand. The study calls for the truck traffic on K Street to be routed over to an improved O Street. Building costs today are about 30% higher than just two and a half years ago. For a family earning $90,000 a year, it shows a feasible home purchase price of $360,000, which I don't believe is any possible. And in its list of the top 20 employers for Arcata, the study is missing some major players, including Cocatec, North Coast Children's Services, and Wing Inflatables is not listed. And somewhat amazingly, it has a section describing the cost of annexing 358 acres of farmland on the west side of Arcata, which was a scenario that was being considered at that time. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. All right. Do we have any other in-person comment on CDBG? All right. Take it online. Is there anybody? All right. Well, that being said, either any follow-up questions or thoughts, or we can entertain a motion in a second.
All right. So I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 234-01, accepting the analysis and infill market study with appendix report and the analysis and City of Arcata Housing Element six-cycle report and direct staff to disencumber unused grant funds. Authorize the city manager to sign the closeout certification and submit final reports and closeout package in California Housing and Community Development, CDBG Division.
I will second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks. All right. That will take us to item C, which is to receive a verbal report from the Planning Commission Chairperson, Scott Davies, on the Planning Commission's recommendations for the city's general plan updates. And I just wanted to share a few words before we dove in, but just to express my appreciation, first of all, to the Planning Commission for their dedication throughout this process and really, you know, agreeing to work with the council and get us some recommendations in a timely fashion, and also to meet for some extra meetings and meet on the weekends. It's not easy work. And so thank you guys very much for taking it seriously and getting this to us this evening. And so I'm just really excited that we're at this stage in our planning where the council will be able to kind of begin our formal review with the public and with the Planning Commission. And again, this is going to happen through a series of at least three study sessions that we already have set for August, September, and October. And so tonight, we're just going to kind of receive this update from staff and the Planning Commission Chair about the recommendation that is going to come forward to us and kind of create a timeline and, you know, look at what this document that we're all going to be working from is, is looking like. And so again, tonight, this is going to be a presentation. It's not intended to be a major, you know, discussion point or any decision-making at all, because again, we're going to have a few more study sessions and a lot more stuff to, to work through and discuss. And so no specific policy has been decided upon yet, but again, this is a good chance for input, and it's really nice to see some different faces here this evening and people getting involved and wanting to comment. So thank you for coming out to the meeting. And by the end of the month, I believe we're going to have the completed, new updated draft that reflects the Planning Commission's recommendations for all of the general plan elements, except the Gateway release for the council's and public review. And so we will have this new base document to work from that we can all suggest changes to and, you know, kind of have a common ground going forward. And so our first study session in August is going to focus more overall on the general plan because we can all be there. We're all scheduled to be at that one, and so we will not be getting too much into Gateway on that first one. And so again, tonight's presentation is going to start with the overall general plan recommendations and the timeline for that, and then it will move on to the Gateway update. So we'll kind of break a little bit at that point and let our colleagues that need to recuse themselves to leave the room. So again, thank you to the Planning Commission, and thank you to the Community Development Department for all the work that you guys have done. And I'm going to turn it over to Director Loyah and Chair Davies.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. It's exciting to finally be here at this milestone and before you this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update this evening on the Planning Commission's review of the general plan, Gateway Area Plan, and the associated Gateway Code. The Planning Commission has taken many, many hours of public comment, has received numerous letters expressing a wide array of opinions, and has had countless interactions with our fellow residents, from the grocery store to the farmer's market, from crabs games to marsh walks. We've also looked at recommendations from a number of city committees. The Planning Commission recognizes the housing crisis impacting our town and its associated effects, affecting everything from healthcare to homeownership, rental prices to homelessness, all of which lends urgency to our work. We've also looked closely at the increasing pressure from Sacramento and the state government on communities across California to increase housing development, as well as the growing enforcement pressure from the state, which could result in the state permitting projects in our town if we do not keep up with state-mandated housing goals. We recognize that Arcata will grow and take it as a given that people will continue to move here. The question therefore isn't whether Arcata should grow, but rather, how will we grow? The Planning Commission has taken the view that thoughtful development, which incorporates community input, is environmentally responsible, elevates our values of inclusion and diversity, and which retains as much autonomy from the state as possible in our development path, is the best way forward. The result is the recommendation we finalized, as promised, at our July 11 meeting. Since council members Atkins Salazar and Stillman will need to recuse themselves from the Gateway topics, I'll start by focusing on the general plan, and then I will pause for the transition to the Gateway-related topics to allow for those recusals. Despite being on the far north coast, the City of Arcata is not shielded from the statewide housing crisis. In many ways, we feel the pinch more than other parts of the state, since wages are lower, housing costs are respectively higher, and yet the cost of production is equal or higher than state average, and yet housing costs are lower. Together, all of this means it is less economical to bring new housing to market here. On top of that, our inventory of available land for housing production is dwindling, with fewer than 286 housing units left in our 2019-2027 housing element inventory. In fact, the Gateway rezoning was a housing and community development condition of its 2019 housing element certification. Adding in the pressure from the state, which is applying to hand over land use decisions for housing production to developers if cities are not proactive, it's imperative that we develop policy and zoning that supports rapid development of housing in the way we, as Arcatans, wish to see it developed. On July 11th, the Planning Commission voted to recommend that June 27, 2023, draft general plan for the council's consideration. This version included thousands of hours of combined review over the last year and a half between commissioners and committee members, as well as the countless hours invested by the community. While there is a diversity of opinion in our community on key issues, the... While there is a diversity of opinion in our community on key issues, the recommendation the commission made weighed all of the public input we received, as well as the recommendations of the various committees. We recognize and anticipate additional modifications may come from the ongoing public process. While there may be polishing, the June 27 draft provides the commission's suggestion for the policy framework for our community for the next 20-year planning period. We look forward to discussing the details with the council at our upcoming joint study sessions in August, September, and October. I want to share with you some of the major issues we grappled with in our deliberations by highlighting the issues that generated the most discussion. Agricultural resource preservation generated the most extensive and diverse comments. The Craftsman's Mall infill opportunity zone was proposed to transition from residential low to residential high, and the commission recommendation is... ...public input. Parking is a major issue in all of our land use discussions. This is also a topic with a clear split in the community. Many would like no parking and road closures to allow better access for bikes and pedestrians. Others would like to ensure each project fully manages its potential maximum parking needs. The commission also focused on racial equity and social justice throughout each of the elements. In particular, the mobility, land use, historic preservation, and design elements generated rich discussion on various policies to ensure the language was sensitive to bias and proactively set the city up for addressing the differences and outcomes based on race and social status. Our commitment to racial equity went deeper than language review. Staff has been working with Blank and Orem Equity Partners, who convened a stakeholder group to provide input on lived experience of BIPOC community members. Policy was drafted to be responsive to the feedback received, then the policy was vetted with the same group. The city is also working with Equity Arcata and a broad network to provide input on several policy areas. In addition, the city included a health element in the June 27 draft general plan, which emphasizes racial equity and access to healthy living for all. We, as a commission, would like to discuss the land use and health elements with you at the joint study session, along with other topics that were of particular interest to the commission and community. These two elements highlight some of the larger, largest changes, rather, citywide. I'd like to pause here to address any questions about the general plan, and I'll ask staff to discuss the process moving forward and then transition into the Gateway Plan.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question about the health element, you know, as far as what is contained in that overall, like what major points does that hit? I know that we're going to get to see it soon and read it and discuss it with you guys, but what are the, kind of the major policy areas that that looks at?
Yeah, I'll weigh in on this. The health element is a brand-new element in the general plan that covers a wide range of health topics, everything from, you know, active living to ensuring that there's, you know, healthy food available to everyone throughout the community. And the way that we have it structured right now is it's all in one document. The majority of the policy we envision remaining in an element entitled the health element. And then at the end of that, because the health element policies really do cross over with many of the other elements, we've broken them down into different sections based on the element that we feel those bodies of policy fit into. And so we'll have recommendations for moving some of the health element into the circulation element, the mobility element, some of the health element into the open space element and recreation element, for example. Those elements are online right now, and I'll show you where to find those in a moment, but they really span the gamut of, you know, health policies. And then, in part, because they were actually funded by... Jen, can you give me help with the entity that funded the health element?
Uh... (laughter)
Great partner that will come to me in a moment, but their mission is on tobacco cessation, and so there are several policies around tobacco cessation in there as well.
Wonderful, thank you, David. Any other questions right now from the council at this pausing point about general plan stuff?
So, I wanted to make sure I heard correctly, you mentioned the Craftsman Mall, did you mention that? And is zoning changed in that one?
Yes, I did.
But it's not part of the city anymore?
Well, that area...
Oh, the larger area?
Yeah, the larger area, which is south of that...
Okay.
Was part of our discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions about general plan stuff?
No, but I'm looking forward to the study session, like getting to read it and talk about it, so...
Us, too. Yeah, us, too. Everyone on the commission is looking forward to finally being able to work together with city council on wrestling with some of these issues that we've been dealing with kind of on our own for a long time, so, speaking for the whole commission, we're all enthusiastic about being able to work with you over the next three joint study sessions.
We will get further updates and the work that Equity Arcata has been doing, you said, yes? Okay, and that will happen before the study session, or we'll have that available for us?
Yes, absolutely, and we, and I'll show you where, again, on our website, that information is located. The Equity Partners Report is up on our website, and I do need to correct just one bit of information that I provided the chair previously for his report about the status of that. The document is planned to be vetted with the original stakeholders, it hasn't been done so yet, but it is on our website, the outcomes from those stakeholder meetings, and it's actually right here, so that's a nice segue. So I just wanted to touch base, as I'm going through the process with the council and committee, the community, on where some of these resources are that'll be helpful for you to review before your study sessions begin, and just to orient folks to where things are. And so we've been tracking all of the public engagement on our Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan, or SERP webpage, if you Google SERP in Arcata, or if you go to our website, citi of arcata.org, and use the search function, you'll be able to find it readily. But we've been tracking information that, you know, Planning Commission has been generating, information that the committees have been generating, information that are coming from reports. You see those on the left-hand side here, and on the right-hand side, under the Public Comments tab, you'll see, highlighted in green up there. We've been posting all of the comments that the city receives, either directly or through commissioners, that public members have been submitting, and we're trying to batch those now on a weekly basis. And so these are all located, you can use the QR code if you're looking online, you just want to shoot your phone at it, but they're located at www.citi of arcata.org/940, because that makes sense, slash engagement-information. It's also just really easy to find from the main page, clicking on engagement data, but I wanted to give you the specific URL. So you can look through here and find all of the information that's come forward from, you know, the public, from committees, and from the Planning Commission. It's also housed on, you know, in a couple other ways, we tried to make multiple ways at getting at the same information, so it was easy to receive. We did mention this, just, the mayor mentioned this, but I wanted to reiterate that the general plan, the June 27 general plan, that was currently in track changes, that the Planning Commission made the recommendation to the city council for, will be updated with a new clean version by the end of this month, so those will be out and ready for review. I will note that there were many editorial recommendations, some reorganization that was indicated by the majority of the commission, that we are trying to get completed into this version, but we may not get done with all of it. So there may still be a little bit of editorial cleanup, but the policy that's in there will be the policy that's come forward as a recommendation. And then on the right side here, you see the first page out of our Gateway Code, and by mid-August, that'll be available for review in its revised form, its current draft form that was submitted early June, and that the Planning Commission has now reviewed a few times, is on our website, and you can start reading that now, but the revised version will be complete and ready by mid-August. And these will be the basis for your upcoming study sessions. I wanted to touch base on the timeline real quick, starting here at date zero in the beginning of August, running through, you know, March or April of next year, just to get a sense for what we're anticipating for the timeline to get through this review and what the major milestones are. Looking at the first part of the year, half-year, August through October, rather, we'll have the joint study sessions in August, September, and October. I'm not putting some of the minor milestones here, the Planning Commission has committed to continue its review. There may be some additional recommendations that come forward out of the work that they do over the next several months, so I haven't indicated those here, but they do plan on doing that review. We are also anticipating in August, the draft EIR for this work to be out for its 45-day circulation period. So when a draft EIR is released, there'll be a circulation period, it's called, that circulation period is when the public, agencies, folks who are interested have an opportunity to provide written comments on the draft, and then those written comments are evaluated and responded to in the final, ultimately.
So, can I, I'm sorry to...
Please, yeah.
Okay, so I'm looking at this, and I see study session, study session, circulation, and then Planning Commission follow-up recommendations. When do we get to start making recommendations?
You're gonna, as soon, as soon as you like to, if you want to agendize it earlier, as soon as you like to, but you'll be looking at it at these joint study sessions.
All right, I just feel like it will ease a lot of anxiety if we can, you know, get into it soon.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we've been kind of talking about how we're going to meet next week, about how we're going to structure these study sessions, but kind of looking at similarities as to what the Planning Commission was doing, where we can kind of submit questions beforehand or like thoughts, like the Planning Commission was able to, about like what suggestions and changes we want to see about the topics that we're going to be talking about at the study session, too, which I think is going to be helpful, so we can all, you know, come to the meetings with the work done and ready to have kind of a robust discussion as well, and so we'll be able to do that.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that meeting next week just with the mayor and vice mayor, or will it include all council?
It's just going to be me and the chair of the Planning Commission, and I think city manager and David, and then Heather Equinos, who's been a...
Heather Equinos.
What's the...
Facilitator.
Facilitator, that's the one, thank you, thank you, folks. Yeah, who has been a facilitator in the past for many meetings that we've done, so she's gonna, at least, I know that she can't be there for the August meeting, but she is going to provide us some guidance and hopefully be there for the September and October meetings as well.
This, yes, thank you for all those clarifications and additional information. The lowest branch here, the decision, you'll see that there's nothing posted here for your study sessions. Obviously, you'll be making decisions, I'm reserving that for final decisions, so that you can see when the major milestones... So again, there's all kinds of minor milestones that aren't listed here. Moving into the next three months, November through January...
Director Loya, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I did have a question about the first portion. I think that if you look how the draft EIR starts in August, as well as the first joint study session, there might be members of the public that are questioning that, like, how could you start the EIR if you haven't completed the joint study sessions? Do you, could you just explain a little bit about that to ease people's minds?
Absolutely, thank you for that clarifying question. The EIR is based on these drafts. The EIR is, I would say, insensitive to many of the changes that we might make that change, you know, policy language, as long as they don't affect the environment. So there is a, you know, bit of a risk, calculated risk, that we're taking by circulating the EIR while we're still under review. The EIR is written right now, the admin draft is written, such that the sort of, the largest project description is being evaluated. And so the city council can always ramp down the, you know, the general plan, you know, reduce the size of the impacts through, you know, reducing densities or, you know, reducing other kinds of impacts.
So, and if this is like too granular, let me know, because we're talking about, you know, EIR based on the highest amount, but what happens with like density bonuses? Is that included, too, like?
No, the state has determined that the impact associated with density bonus is exempt from CEQA. So unless the city council has a decision that, you know, look, we want to double our population estimate or something like that, from what it is now, or have some change to the EIR, some change to the general plan, that's going to have a significantly higher environmental impact, then we're safe running with the project description as we have it now. Modifying language, polishing it, changing words here and there to better convey, you know, what our vision is, doesn't affect the EIR. Certainly, if the city council wants to wait to start that circulation period, we can have that conversation, and if you direct that, we will certainly hold. But I think at this point, it's a, you know, a fairly reasonable calculated risk to start the EIR process so that you can complete this work in March, March or April.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. So moving into the next three-month period, the November through January, the major milestones that we have are the circulation period, that 45-day period would end in November, and then in the December timeframe, the Planning Commission will be likely ready to start making some follow-up recommendations. Over the course of those months, Planning Commission will be taking the meetings that it does have scheduled and dedicating at least some time when they, you know, when they're reviewing discretionary projects and such, to continue their review, and I anticipate they'll want to formalize that in a recommendation to you sometime in December.
Could we just back up for a quick, I'm just wondering, so was the decision made that they canceled all of the Planning Commission meetings in lieu of the study sessions, so we're not going to keep moving, or just, those are canceled?
The...
Well, I was just going to say, they're during when they would have their meetings, so we're all having them together. And there will be public comment, and it will be recorded and televised, so.
Yeah, just the formal process. For us to be able to work in a joint study session with the city council required us to cancel our scheduled meetings for those time in order to hold a joint study session with you.
Yeah, it's like herding cats trying to get us all together at...
Right, formally, we had to technically cancel our meetings so that we could then schedule a meeting during that same time with you, so, I hope that answered your question.
And we will not be rescheduling those regular scheduled Planning Commission meetings then, during the study sessions, that entire time?
We will be holding two meetings a month as we normally do. One will be our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings, and the second meeting of the month will be our study session with you. So we will be having the same number of meetings that we normally do, but one of them each month will be with you, which we're looking forward to. Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay, moving into the next quarter, I seem to be missing something. I seem to be missing something pretty critical. Let me zoom out here, and then we'll just do a little workaround. Okay, we'll get that guy out of the way. Okay, so, going into the last quarter here, this is where a lot of, you know, actions start happening, there's a lot of final meetings in February. The PC, the Planning Commission, will have the opportunity to have its final recommendation, which it'll make by resolution to the city council. The final EIR will be published at that time, and so the Planning Commission will be able to make a final recommendation on the EIR as well. Those are both necessary steps for the city council to make its decision, is to get a recommendation from the Planning Commission on these general plan amendments, zoning amendments, and adoption of a EIR.
So, we're going to be making some of these recommendations, like concurrently, I guess? So what if we make a decision, then it just will, then the Planning Commission won't have to talk about that anymore, is that...
Well, the, it's good to have the city council provide policy direction on the types of decisions we're making, absolutely, and so, so you may have a study session, or you may have an agendized item where the council makes a decision and says, you know, Planning Commission, we want you to review this body of policy. You will not be able to formally make a decision until the EIR is completed and certified. You will not be able to formally make a decision until the EIR is completed and certified. And so typically, what we do is, you can, you can separate those in time. Typically, what we do is, we have them on the same meeting. So at the, at the same meeting as the Planning Commission is ready to make its recommendation on the general plan, the form-based code, the gateway code, they will also be looking at the EIR, making a recommendation on that.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
Okay. The, and so the decision will be, Planning Commission final recommendation on some date in Jan-, in February. That's when the, the hot potato will be handed over to the city council, and the city council will be able to start its final review in March. And that will be, again, all of these documents, the environmental impact report, the, the general plan, and the form-based code. And so in March, theoretically, you would be able to certify that EIR and take action on those general plan and zoning amendments. This is, again, this is the sort of, you know, best-case scenario, everything lines up, and we go in linear fashion. The Planning Commission, the city council are really in charge of deciding when these actions take place, but staff believes these are the soonest that they could take place if you chose to, you know, take these actions. So that's kind of the outline of what all the decisions are. You have those three major ones between the environmental review, the general plan, and then the, the code, and when they would happen. Let's go back into this mode. Okay, and so I just wanted to touch base real quick on the outstanding work product. So we're, you know, all on the same page with those. Some of these are, are known, some of these, there is a question mark. If the council wants us to pursue these, we can. So Equity Arcade and Equity Partners, we discussed, were, you know, networking to formulate some recommendations. We have the recommendations from Equity Partners, and they are going to go back after this process to vet those with the stakeholder group. And so we feel like we will have had a really robust discussion about, you know, racial equity and social justice in the review of the draft elements before they come to you. The Turner Housing Policy Lab housing dashboard that we authorized in, that you authorized in early part of this year, is off the ground and running. They have all of the data from us that they need, and I anticipate sometime in the next month to month and a half, seeing some, you know, some preliminary work from them. As soon as we do, we'll schedule a time with you to, to share that with you and the community.
So that will be available for like everybody to look at, right? Cheers.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. We worked with Urban Field Studios to, to test some of the sites in the Gateway area with the code that's been drafted. They presented that information to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and the objective there was to start to get a sense for, based on the objective standards that we've got in this draft code, you know, how realistic is a, you know, the development of, of these, these projects, and, you know, what are some of the things that we need to think about as we finalize the code? The architect from Urban Field Studios who ran these tests, you know, made some, some recommendations that were solidly in his wheelhouse, that were, you know, based on architectural understanding, but he also suggested that, you know, we could get more detailed information from having an economist review those. And there's still some leftover funding and some leftover scope in the work that we're doing with Ben, so what I'd like to be, to seek the authority to do is to transfer some of that to, some of that scope to, to do this economic analysis, and we'll bring that forward through, you know, through a normal approval process. It may be that the city manager has the authorization to do that, but it'd be great to get a nudge, or a wink from the, the council that that's something that you'd be interested in. We also have additional gateway code graphics that are pending. Right now, the draft code has, you know, sort of a subset of graphics to help convey what the, what the code requirements are, but there are also some pretty pictures that the code will have in it as, as we move forward, so there's, those are still outstanding, and of course, the environmental impact report is yet to be released. So those are the major deliverables that we see coming forward during this timeframe. And then with that, I know we asked a lot of questions already, but I'd be happy to entertain any more.
I was just curious, so when we do, when these work products are delivered, recommendations, for example, the Equity Partners and Equity Arcade, when, will we have an opportunity once we've seen the recommendations to, to go back, fill in any gaps if we see any, or is that our product?
No, absolutely. I mean, they're, they're delivering a, you know, summary of the work that they did. Certainly, if the council wants to see additional scope, and, you know, wants to, you know, identify new funding sources to, to complete that scope, we can, we can certainly always do more. We believe Equity Partners has delivered on the scope of work that they've, you know, they've committed to, with the exception of that vetting process that they still have outstanding.
I feel like I've been remiss, because I wasn't aware of that product being available to council, and so I haven't read it.
I, I think I'm the only member of the council that's seen it, because I'm on the Equity Arcade advisory team, so.
So will we have access?
Yeah, and it's online. David showed us.
It is, it is online, on those engagement pages. It's a recent addition. The work is, is fairly recent.
Yeah, we just vetted it at the Equity Arcade advisory team, or, well, the, the members of the advisory team that worked with the document, you know, kind of presented their recommendations to, to us, so that's the only reason I've seen it.
I know that a lot of people have been contacting me about when is the 3D modeling, is that part of the work product, or is that going to happen? And we had talked about other tools that we would be utilizing. I, it's been like a year and a half since we had the open house, and it was in the midst of the pandemic, and I'm just thinking, like, now the time is ripe. We have so many new faces, people that I've never seen before involved, and I'm just wondering, is that something, do we have any money left in our engagement budget? And if so, how much? And could that be something that we could do, is a, another open house? You know, we had, I believe it was 170 people on the first one. I suspect we'll have triple that number now. We have lots of people now who are getting engaged, finally, so it just feels like the time is ripe to bring that in. That might be an excellent time to bring in some of the 3D modeling, and kind of pull it all together for folks that maybe missed it in the beginning.
Won't, I mean, the Turner, won't their, like, dashboard kind of do what the 3D modeling will do? You'll be able to like slide, not that I'm disparaging, I'm just wondering if that's like the same thing?
Yeah, the, the Turner model is focused more on the probability of financial feasibility. The, the 3D modeling, we do have some 3D modeling that we received. The, the community has seen, you know, components of it. A lot of it was glass box, you know, you know, basically translucent boxes that, that showed the maximum extent of, you know, potential development without any reference or context to, you know, what was in the gateway code, because that came before the code. And so we did a few things early on to try and address some of, you know, trying to refine what the 3D modeling was intended to do, but wasn't quite performing the way that we anticipated it would. We hired Julian Berg to, to do a, a drawing. He actually has one other drawing outstanding for us, that he's, he's committed and willing to do, of sort of a more detailed view of what those glass boxes were, were demonstrating. The challenge became the, you know, trying to transition the technology, and we were very excited about it, and maybe over-promoted it at the time, as our, our consultants were describing to us the, you know, the power of it, and the, you know, what it could do. And as we got into, you know, more refined details, the, you know, basically, those are gonna be additive services. And so trying to, you know, do a bunch of, you know, 3D GIS work didn't seem feasible anymore, and so we pivoted and had the Urban Field Studios actually, you know, do some architecture and, and drawing instead. It is certainly, if it's, you know, if the council, you know, wants us to go through that exercise, we could probably pivot some of the money that we have, you know, outline for, for other things at this point, to try and do some of that, but that would not be like, you know, whole-scale, you're gonna see every site designed out. We were talking about a couple of sites similar to what we ended up doing with the
You're not talking about like physical 3D, like, things, like on tables that people can walk around on?
I was expecting, I guess, I was really excited, and it feels kind of anticlimactic, because it never came, and I'm, speaking of Urban Field Studio, it wasn't grand and revelatory to me. I felt like, can we revisit some of that? I, I mean, is there more?
I think in terms of more public engagement, I think the council can choose, you know, whatever path that we want to, as we start to move through this council review of the documents. You know, I think my suggestion would be that you start with your first study session, you start digging into the policy, and then try to figure out if there are specific things that are important to the council to vet further with the community, that we design that engagement around, you know, those specific topics. You know, I think what just, and I've been watching more from the outside, like many, I know all of the council has been, the Planning Commission meetings, it seems like there is a substantial body of work that is fairly universally supported by the community, and then there are a few issues that are gonna take some real deep dialogue within the community. So I think once the council vets out which ones those are, we could talk about what that engagement should look like. Sure.
And we do have money left in the coffers for some engagement opportunities?
Yeah, I'm sure we can identify some.
Okay.
All right, well, I know we have more information to get to, and that folks are, are waiting, so let's keep going, so.
I think we're gonna transition now to the
Okay, that's what I thought.
Gateway, and so we'll say adieu.
Yeah, and we're receiving the presentation on the issue, and then we're gonna take public comment. That is the process of a public meeting. We, we are bound by California state law to follow, you know, the structure of this meeting, so I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but we're gonna continue to hear from our vice chair once, or our chair, once the city manager gets back.
I'm gonna transition to Gateway update now. You, you mentioned briefly, Mayor, bringing comments to our joint study sessions, and I just want to say briefly, and perhaps I should have, to the full council, that at the Planning Commission, sorry, is that better?
I don't know that everyone else is up there as hearing, but I'm happy to hear your permission.
More volume on this mic. Okay. I was just gonna say briefly that one of the, in response to your cue to bring work and questions already to the meetings at the Planning Commission, that was pivotal for us being able to make the progress we did, so I just want to double down and say I think that's a great idea in advance of our joint study sessions. Okay. The Gateway Area Plan provides the policy framework to develop the Gateway area. The Gateway Code is the form-based code that implements, implements the Gateway Plan, and we're now referring to it as the Gateway Code, because we found form-based code somewhat confusing for the public. While we generally had several weeks to months to review and consider each of the general plan elements, including the Gateway Area Plan, we've only had the Gateway Code for a few weeks before our recommendation was made on the 11th. While we did recommend the Gateway Code in its current draft form, we fully anticipate putting in additional work on this before our formal recommendation early next year, as we were seeing on the slide earlier. We also look forward to your guidance at our joint study sessions. Again, I'd like to start by discussing some of the bigger topics that the Planning Commission considered in the Gateway. As with the general plan elements, we appreciated and incorporated all of the committee's recommendations in our, in our recommendation, with one notable exception. Building height has consistently been a major issue on the public's mind. Some people think we've gone too high, others not high enough. The first draft of the Gateway Area Plan proposed building heights to allow up to eight-story buildings in the Beryl District, seven in the Gateway Hub, six in the Gateway Corridor, and five in the Gateway Neighborhood. The Commission recommended reducing the maximum height by one story in each district. The Commission would very much like input on this from the council. Some members of the public have expressed concern about the proposal to split out traffic on K Street into a one-way couplet, with K Street serving northbound traffic and L Street serving southbound traffic. The Transportation Safety Committee recommended against the couplet idea. The Planning Commission retained the couplet in our recommendation, because it is a significantly superior alternative for bike and pedestrian safety than the other options considered. Staff provided several alternatives, and the majority of the commission believes the K-L couplet should be retained in the plan. There are still lands that need to be acquired, and priority use questions that need to be resolved before L Street can be used for this intended purpose, but if we do not state our intentions now, we will not have the policy backing to pursue this option. The plan includes retaining the L Street Trail and enhancing the linear park. Specifically, there is a plan to require and/or incentivize parcels developing adjacent to the trail to provide additional public access to the margins of their property for an expanded trail experience. There were several other topics that were also of concern to the public and/or various commissioners that we vetted over the last several months. These include fire protection services, geological factors, including earthquakes and liquefaction, sea level rise, noise issues, affordable housing and gentrification, and feasibility, to name a few. The Commission feels comfortable with the level of review and vetting on these topics, and has made its recommendation in light of, not in spite of, this information. The Commission has not taken our role lightly. We have provided this recommendation based on reviewing all of the public input, information provided by staff and other experts, and our knowledge of Arcata and the nature of the housing crisis we're all facing. We appreciate the opportunity to hand off this body of work in its draft condition, so that you, the ultimate decision-makers, can start your review. We look forward to follow-up discussions in more depth on these matters. I wanted to close this evening by reading you the action the Commission took last week. The Planning Commission recommends the policy in the Draft General Plan 2045 dated June 27, 2023, including the Gateway Area Plan and the Gateway Code dated July 11, 2023, as amended. This is the Commission's working version for city council review and consideration. The Commission has determined that these versions incorporate policy guidance and implementation that will thoughtfully guide the city's development, while balancing resource preservation, public safety, racial equity, and health. The Commission will continue to undertake more specific and detailed review of the Gateway Code, and is able at this time to provide policy guidance on key focus areas as noted in the July 11 adopted Discussion Guide and Other Considerations table. The Commission will provide a formal recommendation on the final draft versions of the General Plan 2045 and the Gateway Code, along with the Program Environmental Impact Report that incorporates all further revision and editorial and organizational refinement in early 2024. Thank you for your careful consideration of our recommendation, and thank you for your decision to provide a recording of our upcoming study sessions. The Commission and the community appreciate you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, well, before we invite back our other members, do we have any questions from the council on this Gateway specific piece?
Maybe we should take public comment first.
Well, we'll invite them back for public comment, right? I mean, it's general public comment on the whole item, right?
Fair enough. Good call. Okay, so, go ahead, Kimberly, let me get my thoughts together.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. I very much appreciate. I know we have three new commissioners, and you guys have been working tirelessly on weekends and going above and beyond, very much appreciated. And so, and also thank you to the community who has also been 110% engaged, very much appreciated. I guess, I had a couple of questions. The L Street, you said, was superior, but to any other alternatives, but I've never really vetted any other alternatives myself. I have asked at the last study session, and somehow it just never got on the table. And what I'm hearing from the community is they would like to hear what alternatives before we say, you know, yes, the couplet is going to happen. I don't feel like we've really vetted that process. And also, I would like to know a little bit more about, some folks have been asking me with regards to the Arcata Fire District, where we're at with the standard of cover. I don't know if that's something that should be answered more by staff than yourself. I have questions about the Transportation Safety Committee. I know that at one point, as a planning commissioner, we made a recommendation when I was in, on the Planning Commission, and our recommendation was not accepted by City Council. And a lot of folks on the Commission were like, well, why are we here? And I'm hearing that also from the Transportation Committee, like, why are they working so hard? They're volunteers, and then their recommendations are thrown out the window. That's not my verbiage, that's what I'm hearing from the community. And I mean, you know, we have 1,000, over 1,000 now, signatures on a petition, the people are speaking and saying what they want. So I guess, I know I've been watching the Planning Commission, I've been hearing the deliberations, I'm just confused.
Can I ask something too? I just, I want to be clear, like, we haven't made any decisions on any of the, I mean, the council has not, like, I have not had the opportunity to provide any feedback either. I mean, we are not at our decision-making point, and so we are going, you know, forward from the recommendation of the Planning Commission, from that document of recommendations to make our recommendations and adopt, you know, this policy. And so, you haven't had the opportunity, I haven't had the opportunity yet either, and you know, I've been told by city staff and cautioned to be, you know, very not outward about what I believe, and to listen and absorb it all, and to wait till it's our opportunity to really do that work. And we, you know, yeah, it's been a long time, we haven't got the opportunity yet, and so that's why we're all really excited to get that opportunity. And I just wanted to add that piece because I think, you know, it, just because the Planning Commission made a recommendation, I think it mischaracterizes it to say that we all think that that's what's going to happen, and that's the recommendation going forward. I think there's a lot more robust discussion to take place, especially on these issues that Scott identified, building height, K and L Street couplet, looking at these alternatives, because you're right, I mean, I agree with you 100%. We haven't seen, you know, what those alternatives exactly look like built out yet. And so, I think it kind of mischaracterizes it to say that, you know, we don't agree with that, or we want to go forward with the L and K couplet, because we have not had the opportunity to make that decision at all.
Thank you. And I guess I just wanted to clarify that what I'm hearing from the community is they're afraid that those alternatives will never be brought to the table because we have been asking for such a long time. So that's my concern.
And I think that's something that we get to ask for at our study session, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate your question. I think probably it's best to wait to dig into the L and K couplet until we're all together work, working on that. It's a complex issue, and one that was something we talked about a lot on the Commission. So I think I'll leave it there, the public can view and be a part of our discussions together. I think we can, there's so much to get into, I'd like to wait. Regarding the Transportation Safety Committee making a recommendation to the Planning Commission, or the Planning Commission making a recommendation to the City Council, I don't see it as a fail if we don't follow the recommendation of one of the committees that makes recommendations to us, any more than I see it as a fail if the City Council decides not to move forward in the directions that we recommend. I think that that's just the natural, organic process of working through this, from the subcommittees to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission to the City Council, that is what happened, but I don't see that as a problem, I see that as the way the process is designed. Similarly, I think it can be difficult when sort of considering public comment, we've taken just such a vast amount of public comment, a huge amount of people feel this is the right direction, a huge amount of people feel this is the right direction. When people don't get their sort of opinions followed, there's a sense that possibly the process isn't working, but I think it's really a matter of, you know, sort of perspective at moments like that. So we look forward to working with you and trust that we'll get into these issues further as we work together in our joint sessions, and that ultimately, as the final decision-making body, you will make a decision that, as a Planning Commission, we will support.
I do appreciate you bringing that up, Kimberly. I know that there is a lot of anxiety and tribulation about the couplet, and I would like to make a recommendation on that sooner than later, just so. I just feel like there's a lot of anxiety about it, and I'd like to talk about it sooner than later, and have it maybe be one of the first focuses of our study sessions.
I mean.
I just wanted to thank you for that clarifying. I know that Fred had mentioned that, you know, there were these different groups of people, you know, it's not going to make a difference, so what's the point? And I just want to encourage you that it will make a difference, stay with us, we'll get there. And I don't see it as a fail, so let me just re-clarify that. I'm afraid that the community might see it as a fail, though, that they came to an open house, 170 people attended, the majority of them said three to four stories, and yet here we are, eight stories, in various, like the Beryl District.
That's 170 people, how many people live in Arcata? Not 170, so.
Yeah, so I think that's a perspective you can bring to our joint study sessions, and we can talk it through.
Yeah, okay, so some of the other things that I would like to talk about is opportunities for home ownership, looking through that infill study plan, I know that was something that was called out as something very important, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, so I'd like to talk about opportunities for that. I'd like to talk about, I know Councilwoman Stillman has brought it up, probably at an opportune time, but I'd also like to talk about condominiums and what that looks like. I'd like to revisit our RENA numbers and look at the amount of very low income to low income to moderate to above moderate housing, and what that looks like, because, and then, what else? And parking, we need to still talk about that.
I concur on all of those, thank you. I do want to revisit the inclusionary zoning, I don't even think we're close to getting there. If we're looking at 5%, and I believe it's 3% is going to be moderate, correct me if I'm wrong, and then it's 2%, which will be lower, extremely low, right now, the way the market is, moderate is going to be more than most people in our city can even afford. So I think that, you know, and it's or, it's not, it's either or, so they can choose a developer to do moderate income, which is going to leave the rest of those who have nots will have not. So I think that we need to look at inclusionary zoning, there are cities that go as high as 25%. I don't say that we have to do that, but 5% is where we should be starting, not ending.
Probably I can let staff weigh in more on this, or we can talk about it at the study sessions, but one of the things we were aware of and thought about a lot at the Planning Commission was approaching the threshold of the density bonus, and at which point developers would just elect to utilize the density bonus. And so that was something that affected those kind of, where those numbers fell, and part of our recommendation.
So it sounds like we do have a lot of work still to do on trying to make this affordable housing, affordable for those who are already here, not those who are coming here that can afford what the rest of us can't. Sorry if that didn't make any sense.
Okay, all right, and so now we have a good little list gathered together to some of these topics to look at the study session, that was again another item I was hoping to generate this evening. So Scott, do you have anything else to add before we invite back Stacy and Alex, and we open it up for public comment?
Just last thoughts, again, appreciate the chance to bring this to you, and I think it's pretty obvious to everyone, whichever side you fall on, what the most important issues, the highest priority issues where there's the most need for more engagement are. And as we plan out how to utilize our joint sessions, I think we will clearly prioritize those issues as first on the, you know, first on the dock, so.
Thank you so much for all of this, we really look forward to working with you and having robust conversations. I feel like I've been watching you, you guys have been watching us, it'll be really nice to all come together, so thank you.
You guys should get chocolate chip cookies for life, whether we all concur or agree, you guys are doing an amazing job, so thank you for that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, let's get Stacy and Alex back in here, and invite folks up for comment. All right, so if you do want to make comment, please make your, start making your way to the podium if you are able, and line it up, and you will have three minutes. We'll start with in-person comment first, and then go to online, we will not be going back and forth, so if you would like to comment, please begin, make your way up or raise your hand online. Thank you for your patience, sir, please, go ahead.
My name is Gil Friedman, I'm a resident of Arcata for over 30 years, I own some property here, and I love Arcata. It's got the best weather in the world, I feel lucky to live here, and I plan to continue. All over the world, communities are trying to take crowded sections and make them friendly for pedestrians, and we have one already by nature, L Street. L Street, for those people who like to take walks, L Street is a gem. Women with strollers, bikes, cars, I mean, dogs, everyone walks down that street, and it doesn't lead to nowhere either. If you go to Samoa and jog a little to the right, there's a stoplight there, which is great, it says, cross at your own risk, vehicles may not stop. You walk 150 yards, and you're in Brackish Pond, which is my favorite place in town. You could be five, 10 feet from a great blue heron, egrets all over the place, and you can walk out, it's a wonderful place. If you put this loop in, that's going to be cut, you'll have to go to I Street to get there. I could walk there from my house on J Street. I'd like to say another thing about it, the idea that you could have a one-way streets, one-way streets cause faster traffic, there's been study after study, if they have a straight lane, it encourages people to drive fast. Right now, we have that situation already, we have G and H. There's a whole section of people who live west of 18th Street, in a big alley cove there, and those people have to cross H Street every day, and eight or nine in the morning, they're taking their life in their own hands. When the cars come off that freeway, they just zoom like they're right on the freeway again. I live by 17th and J, I gave up trying to cross H Street, I go to 16th where the cars have to stop. So if you want to have cars to go slower, plant more trees, have more stop signs, but don't think you're going to solve anything by making one-way street. We already ruined H Street by 10th and 11th by putting these big flower pots in them, so we had a perfectly two-lane street, now it curves to one lane and you have to turn right. It's a disaster, featured by our Planning Commission. Now, all this stuff about the houses going up in Arcata, it's absolutely true, it's also true of every city in the state of California, there's no exception. And as for the state, if we don't do something, the state will, I'd like to tell you about my experience in San Francisco. I lived there during the 60s, they were going to build freeways everywhere, 27 miles, rip out the Panhandle, do all that, and all the liberals and progressives were for it, Governor Brown, the mayor, one guy, Blake, he voted against it, he stopped those, and everybody argued that, although if we don't build these freeways, the state's going to mandate it. We have the right to stop it, and hope we'll find our Blake to stop this thing, because I think it's crazy. You don't have to do anything with L Street, it's perfect the way it is, it's a gem, God gave it to us by accident, let's keep it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everybody. When he was born, we brought him back to where we lived on H Street, and the L Street Park was the nearest park to us. You've got the plaza, but obviously to run around a bit, L Street was pretty preferable, a lot more room. I'd also ask you to consider the eventual, maybe when he's older, Great Redwood Trail, which will terminate there. It'll be kind of odd if it just like suddenly stops abruptly, right, when it gets to Arcata, which I think would be at the end of the marsh, right? So like it would end at Samoa, which is kind of a high-traffic area, to say the least. In addition, anybody who bikes will tell you that a separate lane is always going to be the safest option. I mean, if we're sharing a street, it's never going to be as safe as having something separate like that bike path. And the more we cultivate a reputation as being a bike-friendly city, the more folks will be moving here, with that in mind, like Davis, California, everybody knows it's bike-friendly, students move there, they know to bring their bikes, not their cars. I'll leave it there, thanks.
Hi, I'm Merle Kraus, um, let's see. Hi, I'm Merle Kraus, I feel like I'm coming into, I'm just so afraid of what's going to happen. I think it was V A Magazine listed the top 10 most desirable towns to live in in the United States, and Arcata was one of them. It's not going to be, if you do eight-story, the fill-ins, it's not going to be, it's not going to be desirable, it's going to be more like Oakland, but all the places that people have left, Oakland, Berkeley, San Fran, a lot of San Francisco and LA came here because Arcata was special, and it's all those buildings, eight stories, and they're, the other thing to think about, top tall buildings, I mean, I'm from, I lived in Sonoma County 30 years, and Santa Rosa is a big city, and they built one eight-story building, and they said, no way, and there are no, Santa Rosa's a nice city, and there's no, there's nothing taller than four stories. And I'm just wondering, one, about the liquefaction zone, the tsunami zone, the water level, I think these are problems with high rises that I don't think we want, and how will sewage be handled, and where will the shadows of the buildings fall? Will they, will they shade existing homes or businesses, especially those relying on solar panels or their roofs? Or are, what's nice about Arcata is the view, we all have views of Humboldt Bay, and I'm just thinking, this plan seems to go, is going to change the whole face of the town. Not only that, but I went to law school, and our criminal law teacher may express the fact that crime goes up with the population, but not with the number, the same number, it goes up exponentially. The more dense you have people, the more crime goes up exponentially. Do we have the infrastructure for the police to really handle what's going to happen? And all these, and the idea of, oh, some people don't even want cars. Well, a lot of people are older, like, we've come to, we've moved to Arcata, our kids went to Humboldt State, and we said, this is a really nice place to live, it's a very humane, comfortable place to live, and a lot of people, 70s, 80s, we're going to all hop on our bikes to go to Safeway and get our groceries. I don't, I don't know if that's so realistic that that's going to happen. So I just want you to please consider, you know, a lot of the people that live here and moved here, and just because they're not here, and they're not, you know, jumping up and down like I am, doesn't mean that we don't feel that we moved here because we love this place, and it will change irrevocably. I've lived in towns, and I've seen them change, White Rock, British Columbia, I've seen them change with the growing buildings, and it's just been, it's been kind of horrendous to see. So I hope that you've taken that into consideration. We don't, progress is not necessarily having a huge, much denser population, I know we need to build some.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alan Ringer, I'm a city of Arcata resident, and I'm engaged on various community issues. I want to speak today in support of retaining the L Street corridor as a pedestrian and bicycle pathway. I have a difference of opinion regarding that being developed as a high-speed truck road, and the ability to maintain those, those features that are, provide pedestrian and foot-traffic corridor there, it's the one spot that exists like that through Arcata, and conversion of that would be, would be a loss for Arcata. I'll mirror some other comments that were made, I think the statewide effort to bring the Great Redwood Trail from here down to Mendocino County, confining that in Arcata to, you know, to a, you know, kind of curbside, fast road, truck road is not consistent with what I want Arcata to have as component of the Great Redwood Trail. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gillian. I live in
Hi, I'm Gillian. I live in Arcata, recently bought a house in Arcata, but moved here probably almost ten years ago. And we were stationed at the RV park that's in town. And the Linear Park was the closest, safest place that I could walk my dogs. And so, I always walked my dogs there. And then, you know, as years went on, I opened a childcare. And I know many families who head over to the Creamery District area for all the fun and games and the different activities that happen there. It's very walkable. It's very friendly. It would be such a shame to let this go to like, big business hauling through town. And, you know, I think originally, G Street was the 101. If I'm not correct, maybe I'm not correct, but it kind of feels like we're trying to do that again. You know, I wasn't here when it was on G Street, but I certainly don't think that it would be a place I would choose if there was a huge street running through, you know. And it just seems like a big mistake to try to have that kind of traffic running through town when, you know, some of us here are avid bikers and we bike the critical mass. And there's been probably four deaths in the last year-ish, just with our twenty-five mile an hour zones. That sounds scary. That sounds scary enough. It's already kind of scary to bike around town, knowing that. And, you know, I don't typically bike by myself just because of that, you know. And then, thinking again, I'm, I live down in the Greenview neighborhood and I love my two-story house where I can look out and see the hills. And I know many other people can see the hills and the bay from, you know, their two stories or their one-story even, depending on where you live. And if we shoot up a bunch of buildings everywhere, that's going to be nil. That's going to be the end of that. You know, and that's why a lot of people have moved here, for the beauty and to be able to see nature in all directions. And it would be a shame to take that away from some of us who, you know, really appreciate that. And then, also going back to the Linear Park, you know, like I said, some of the folks here, we're all avid bikers. We've got our kinetic machines with a slew of people outside. And, you know, you've got to cross, you've got to cross through the Creamery District to get to the Plaza. And, you know, I don't think any of us want a big road put in there. It's just something to consider. And I know, like, somebody else said, "Maybe we're not all here right now, but the last thirty to fifty people that I've spoken to about this in Arcata have no idea what's going on." And it's time to like, raise our voices and make sure people have a say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Aaron. I own a home near the Creamery District. I work in the Creamery District. I recreate in the Creamery District. It's become a home and it's a beautiful place to be because there's not a lot of traffic. The Plaza is not fun anymore. There's a lot of traffic. There's a lot of folks disturbing the peace there. But that little Creamery District is a hub of art. I got into the kinetic world. We're building down there, doing neat stuff. So many people and children come down that area to play. I work with adults with developmental disabilities in the community with a few of the people here. We do very strong work in that entire neighborhood. We landscape three of the sites in that area. We ride the Rails-to-Trails for Recreation every Friday in a bike group. They've never learned how to ride a bike before, but because there's no cars, it's a very safe place to ride. We wrote a grant, got some cargo vessels. So, now our adults with developmental disabilities are able to pedal around on the Rails-to-Trails to get back and forth to work. They're in command of their own steed. They absolutely love it. It's awesome. I feel like taking that away was, it's like a bad chess move. If you go forward, don't go back. That is a beautiful stretch. I'd love to see it finished off with some more benches. I understand this area needs some development. I don't know a lot about the gateway plan yet, so I'm just learning about it. However, if taking out that stretch of pedestrian bike path is on the agenda, you're already losing a people's interest. And there are hundreds and hundreds of us that ride on that trail. We've met elderly that are getting back into riding bikes because there's e-bikes now and they can get off the road and blend into the marsh. I'd really like to keep that pathway and hopefully expand and make more and figure out a way to keep some of the buildings at four stories max. I think more than that might be a bit much. I appreciate all your time and what you're doing. Please don't take our pathway. Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Finn. I've been in Arcata since about 2006, 2007. I love it here. This is my favorite city that I've ever lived in. One of my favorite things about living in the city is the bike path that's along L Street. I don't really feel safe riding my bicycle around traffic. And that was the perfect path that I could get through town to the marsh, to many beautiful places, to the Plaza with, while feeling safe and being separated from traffic. And please do not take that away from us. I'm not the only one that, that feels that way. Another thing is that I live on a one-way street. I live on H Street on Eighteenth. And people fly by. It is not safe crossing the street. Every time I pull out, I cannot see who's coming. And people are going forty miles an hour on that one-way street and it doesn't feel safe. So, please do not add more fast, unsafe streets for the pedestrians and cyclists here. Also, I would like to say that you say that you have to make the couplet for pedestrian safety, but I don't understand how turning, you know, making a one fast chaotic street into two fast chaotic streets, how that is safe for pedestrians. They now, to go from the Plaza to the Creamery District instead of crossing one street that's really busy, you're going to turn it into two streets that are really busy. So, how, I just can't conceptualize how that is making it safer for the pedestrians and the cyclists. I love the city. You know, changes are always hard. We want to resist change. But please, that is a gem for the city. We could enhance it, make it better. You know, it's something that will bring people here, something that we can say is special about here. So, please don't take that away from us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ann Anderson. I've been an Arcata resident for about twenty years. And I wanted to speak on the conversion of the L Street to a one-way street for through traffic. I understand K is busy and may be unsafe, but why take L, which is largely for pedestrians and bikes, and turn it into another busy and potentially unsafe street, street for cars? Why do we prefer cars over people and bicycles? Instead of, instead make, I think it's probably possible to make K more safe if that is an issue, which may be. Maybe more stoplights, maybe bumps, but I think you could slow down K and make it more safe. There's several things you could, you could do. The other thing is over on L, there's a little nebulous, you know, the Creamery Buildings. They have a lot of cute little shops in there now. I could see if there's the Linear Park, you're going to attract more small businesses. And it could be a magnet for economic development for small businesses in that, that whole district, which would be really, really nice. The other thing I have to say that the last few weeks, there are, the marsh has been inaccessible because of development in there. And so, my husband and I, he, he needs a walker to walk more than, you know, a few hundred yards. And so, we found that the, the bikeway on L Street has been just a wonderful place. We've been going over there to walk now. And so, I've kind of just rediscovered, just discovered it. But we didn't have a place that we could really walk quietly and safely without having the marsh open. And now, we found this place. It's really nice. It would, so I think elders who might be in wheelchairs or walkers can also really take advantage of it, not just bicyc, you know, younger bicycle riders. Thank you.
I'm so grateful for all of you for all the work that you do. You don't see my face because I've trusted you since nineteen seventy-four is when I moved here. And all I really want to say is that when I lived in France, you've got central, beautiful, beautiful cities in the central parts of most of them. And they are ringed by eight, nine, ten-story, you know, because they're trying to solve where to put people. And those things are disgusting to live in. I've lived in them. They're harsh. They're anti-human. They're very, very difficult. So, all I really want to say is, as you go forward, and I really appreciate, and I'm sorry I don't know your name, who's not looking at me, but I appreciate the fact that there are so many of us who don't know what is going on or who assume we have no influence or ability to say, "Wait a minute. We moved here because it's a human place to live." Eight stories, square buildings, these are not human. So, I just want to say thank you for providing more opportunity for a lot of people to say, "We love Arcata the way it is." And it's not, I mean, yes, it has to change. We're going to grow. But how are we growing? So, thanks for providing those questions of alternatives and models and can we help the architects make it a more humanly designed building. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I'm Fred Wise. This week's Mad River Union has a pretty good set of articles on Gateway Plan and issues with L Street. Kevin Hoover notes that the city's official image for the cars shown on L Street, and the image is his, his word, imperfect. The cars are shown very small on the image. They're the size of subcompact cars, size of a Honda Fit, smaller than a Toyota Corolla, five and a half feet wide. If you want to see what an eight-foot vehicle or an eight-and-a-half-foot delivery van looks like, go to ArcataOne.com and see the images there. I'll remind the council, an emergency vehicle cannot get around stalled car on a one-lane road. There's, some people feel that me calling the L Street as a truck route is, quote, "A little much." The city's transportation element in the general plan calls K Street a truck route. L Street would also be a truck route in this case. There is a question that, all this will take a long time. Foster Avenue took seventeen years. There's no comparison whatsoever. I've got two articles on Arcata One. For, L Street has many, many existing homes, businesses, apartments. Foster Avenue was pretty empty. I want to know why we're not seeing 3D modeling of potential designs and build-outs. Now is the time, absolutely now. The discussion from the Community Development Director, explanation about why it's not happening, I don't think holds water. We've already seen good 3D modeling in stuff that, articles, the Building and Massing Presentation has good 3D modeling. The studies that we've seen have, have none. The discussion of setbacks and step-backs would benefit tremendously. I've mentioned this before, the other considerations table. There's a question of creating a separate district where the Creamery District does. It was brought up by the former chair of the Planning Commission. It was brought up by twenty-three signatories from the Arcata Playhouse Group. It is listed as a public member. It's not a public member who brought this up. It was the former chair. Staff says that this will be respectful, considerate of the unique site. They recommend that this be conveyed in the Form-based Code. We've seen nothing in the Form-based Code about this. Urban field studies, I think they botched their first report. I've written to you about this, hiring them to do an economic analysis, I think is folly. Calling this bike path that could be along a road on L Street as a Linear Park is disingenuous to the extreme. It has nothing to do, calling that a Linear Park has nothing to do with what everyone here has been talking about as a Linear Park. Homeownership, I'll talk about this separately. Humboldt Association of Realtors has called for ten percent. We don't see anything at this time. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. And my father taught me that history is really important to understand history of a place. And I did not live in Humboldt County or Arcata when the previous general plan was being created. But I just want, we have a lot of transition lately with a lot of council members and commission members, you know. It's, the last few years have been one of transition of people sitting in those seats and making decisions. Previously, apparently, the general plan had over a hundred, I don't know what the exact number was, citizens involved in different committees working on the general plan. I don't know why this time around, citizens are not as involved and citizens are just becoming aware of what's going on. And, you know, I, I don't know what the excuse is, but how this has all come down to these final months of determining the fate of our community, it's pretty important to me to look back at history, see the neighborhoods and the kinds of developments that occurred or what took place. See the evolution of place. See how people want to live and how they can live together, how they can move together. We are talking, as I mentioned earlier, about a climate crisis and fossil fuels fueling that crisis. And we're not talking about cars. We're spending so much time dealing with cars. The future is not going to be about cars, people. I don't care what you want. It cannot be about cars if we want to survive. So, when we're talking about a livable community, parks, open spaces, pedestrian paths, bicycles, shuttles for those of us who can't move around on those things right now. I think we really need to step back and not just look at what the state says, not just look at what the people are doing in terms of infill and density and high-rises and design features that are very urban. We are still a small rural college town. I really want more college involvement in our city and vice versa. We need to be much more holding hands and working together than it seems to appear that we're doing now. But I understand with the Great Redwood Trail, this is something new on the horizon and we really need to take that into consideration and some of these other broader ideas. So, I'm going to go over and see Mike McGuire at the baseball game and talk to him about the Linear Park.
Thank you, Joanne. All right, we're getting near the end. If you do want to make a comment, get up at that podium. Take it away.
Hi, I was hesitating because there's so many good things coming out, but I just thought I'd round things out a little bit. Yeah, I do appreciate Commissioner Davies' just, his straightforwardness about things. The Planning Commission has made the KNL Cup but a goal in seeking funding and design, you know. And at a previous Plan Commission meeting, we received a brief presentation on alternatives for safety options for K Street. Those appear to have been shelved in favor of continuing to preserve the KNL couplet, or pursue it, I should say. The safety options for K Street should be decoupled from L Street. Transportation Safety Committee's recommendations for the, both the Gateway Plan and the general plan on L Street have been relegated to non-comporting and largely disregarded. L Street Pathway is a primary active transportation corridor in Arcata, a part of the Humboldt Bay Trail and Great Redwood Trail, as everybody has stated. The couplet, you know, it promises to pave over the greenway portions of the L Street with asphalt. Where's the promise of less car-centric active transportation for the Gateway District, also known as the Creamery District? L Street rails with trails, you know, utilized the corridor back in 2015 when it was established. What we're asking for now is to further utilize, further utilize the corridor by enhancing it into a Linear Park, not degrading it into a truck route. It's a logical next step with rails, trails, or for future infill to make the best possible use of the space of the corridor. I recommend encouraging frontages on the corridor to be treated as community benefit, or even better yet, that the frontages be considered a requirement or possibly just work it in something with the housing so it, it all works out and allow it to expand that space and make it the best, you know, space going through and possibly the best part of the Great Redwood Trail. It's primarily a Class I trail, as is almost all of the Humboldt Bay Trail. And, you know, it'll be reduced to a Class IV trail path with basically a barrier next to it at best. Arcata will be going through growing pains. I think the park can offer some respite from that. And then, just finally, you know, solar shading recommendations have recently been, you know, discounted by the Planning Commission. I hope to revisit those and do better on it. In addition, you know, just ignoring frontages, I think are, were offered out also within the Gateway Draft, and those have been walked back. And, I mean, and one of the very great places the frontages could be, you know, dedicated is definitely along that corridor. And anyway, the solar shading is an issue and I feel like that's also been discounted, but I'll say that for another time. Thank you. Appreciate everybody.
All right, anybody else in person? All right, anybody else in person? We will not be going back and forth, now's your chance. All right, let's check on Zoom.
All right, we've got one person on Zoom, go ahead, Jane.
Hi, it's Jane Woodward. I just want to say thank you for all the work that the Planning Commissioners have done and all the individuals. Pardon me? What? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hold on one sec, Jane, we're figuring out some audio here.
Oh, this has happened before, I know.
Okay, Jane, can you try again? Are you unmuted?
Can you hear me?
Okay, we're hearing you in the office but not on the speaker, so give us one more second, we'll check back in here. I know, it's every, yeah. Try again, Jane?
Can you hear me now?
Well, no, she's in there, we hear her from that speaker but not from the speaker.
Perhaps you should test these things out in advance.
All right, Jane, go ahead.
Oh, is it working now?
No, we're, try again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hallelujah. You know, when we do the Ollie Brown Bag Lunches, we always test things in advance to make sure they work. You might consider doing that in the future. I just, I don't want to reiterate things I've said in the past and other people have said the things about the L-K Street Park and the Linear Park that you don't need to hear them again, but it is a gem. But I want to say thank you to all the commissioners who have done so much work on this and their patience in listening to many of us who have come repeatedly because we weren't sure we were being heard. So thank you for all those who have participated and thank you to the council. I know many of you have been watching the Planning Commission meetings and reading our emails, which we also send to you, and our public comments, and it's a lot of work, we realize it's a lot of work. We hate having to repeat ourselves, we wish there was some magic way around that you'd know and be able to acknowledge you're getting our comments and taking them into consideration. It's simply that it's not always obvious, so we end up being redundant. For that, we apologize, but it's important that you hear. So I'm going to wish you best of luck with handling this. We won't get the new draft until the end of July and then we'll be able to sit down and look at it and determine what's left out. And there are more Planning Commission meetings coming that will also address some of these issues that have been discussed tonight. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Jane, those were good words of encouragement. Okay, all right, do we have any other Zoom commenters or just the one?
We do not.
Okay, well, I will bring it back to the council for any last-minute wrap-up thoughts, however, again, avoiding Gateway discussion now that we're all back together, but if you want to tie it up with a bow if anybody has anything or we can move to our next item.
I listened to how high, I just looked at this and I know people have been...
No, Alex, you don't get to, take this off the screen, you don't get to talk about it.
I just wonder if eight, how come?
Nope. Okay, so any non, okay.
Thank you, Planning Commission, so much, thank you staff, thank you everybody for your public comment. We are listening to you, we haven't made any decisions yet and we're really, really looking forward to getting together and discussing it, so we really appreciate you, all the new faces that are here tonight, speaking your truth, we really appreciate that, so thank you so much.
And we're looking forward to our August study session, so if not sooner, I'll see you then.
Are we not doing any staff reports?
No, we are, we're just sending that item.
I think they think we're leaving.
No, I mean, they're leaving if they want, but we're going to have oral and written communications, we got a staff report, we got dates of future meetings, but please feel free to leave if you would like to leave, no pressure. There is a baseball game, we're all trying to get to that baseball game too. All right, Joanne beat us there. Oral and written communications, again, this is for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of communications, council may respond to statements. Speakers addressing the council will be limited to three minutes, so if you are here in person and wanting to give public comment on an item that is not on the agenda, that has not been spoken about this evening, come to the podium or if you're on Zoom, press star nine, raise your hand.
I'll try to keep it not on the agenda. First, I want to say thank you. Thank you to staff, thank you to the Planning Commission, thank you to the council. It's been a long process and we're still in the middle of it. The, I'm going to keep my conversation on the process, not on the actual Gateway aspect. The, as part of the framework, there's a table of other considerations, of things that are not included in the plan. There's staff recommendations and there's a column for Planning Commission recommendations. In a recent week's, staff put in the column for Planning Commission recommendations that they concurred with staff. I don't think that was good, I think that's a bad thing and I've written about this. The director explained that these are things that staff would have expected them to say, but there is nothing in the staff report that indicated that. So either there has to be something that indicates that or it has to be yet another The, some of the votes taken at the Planning Commission level were done on a three-to-three basis and it was originally hoped that there'd be much more of a consensus than that, but that was not the case in many important things. The, I think that I can't talk too much more without getting into agenda items, but thank you. Okay, no, I, no, that's okay, but again, thank you, okay?
And thank you for your involvement.
You know, I come off as being very brusque and I apologize afterwards, but it's just my nature. Okay, thanks.
And we thank you for your commitment to the cause and dedication and all that information and emails on the website, you do a lot for folks in your community, so thank you. All right, anybody online?
Yep, we are going to go back to Jane, so everybody else hold your comment. Go ahead, Jane.
Go ahead, Jane. Go ahead, Jane.
All right, here we go. I just realized after what Fred said that I forgot to thank staff. Staff has been amazing in doing as much work as they have. I know you have so much on your agenda and I think you actually do amazing work, all things considered. I'm not always happy with how things are managed or maneuvered, let's put it that way. At the same time, I think the process that you came up with to manage the discussions and the decision-making in the Planning Commission was very productive. A little limiting, a little limiting, limiting is what I'm trying to say, but staff has worked very hard and tries very hard to be responsive, so we appreciate all the work you've done and didn't want to leave you guys out, you're important. Thanks so much, good luck, we'll see you later, we'll see you at the next, at the study session.
Thank you, Jane. Good luck. Oh, we're going to, I don't know, do we need it? No. Okay, that takes us to the end of oral and written communications, that'll take us to council and staff reports. Staff, do you have anything for us this evening?
We do not.
All right. Well, then we'll quickly go through council reports, I know some of us want to make it to the baseball game, so let's keep it to the really exciting, important ones. I think we started at this end last time, so let's start with Alex this time and we'll go down.
So one of the things I've been thinking about is the city parking lots that we own. We don't own very many, but the fact is that we have very little usable land in Arcata and I'm wondering if we should consider those parking lots being available for development of housing. I just wanted to bring that forward, I don't know if anyone feels like have any interest in that or not, but I definitely do.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I think this is something I've also spoken to the city manager about for an agenda item possibly and just looking at, you know, what usable land we do have that could be built or offered up for affordable housing, et cetera, so I would concur that we could add that to a future agenda.
Thank you, because I think we need housing for all, not just affordable. I mean, we need workforce housing, but we have a lot of other people to take care of. The other thing as I wanted to mention is that the Cal Poly just came back from Australia and they spent quite a bit of time in Darwin, at Darwin University in Australia, and my understanding is it's a very similar, not size-wise, they have tall buildings that are probably over eight-feet stories, even though we only say seven, but they have very large buildings there, but it's a community that has much of the environmental sensitivity that we have and I think that they'll be invited to come over to Cal Poly. It might be something that we may want to, as a city, think about having another sister city. So I'm just bringing that up. And then listening and saying all this stuff about bikes, bikes, I really think that I Street is our bike lane and it's not a great lane for bicycles.
Thank you, Alex. All right, Kimberly, what do we got?
I'll go fast because I know everybody wants to go to the game. I just want to say that Kuna had a successful Tiangis, it was probably five times as big as it was last year, Live Music &amp; More. I attended a homeless housing, homeless housing meeting with the city and there were some updates on safe parking, which will go to the end of the month in September, and there were some updates on grants that are in progress, hopefully that will continue the safe parking program. On six-twenty-six, I attended, as a city liaison, the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission. We received an awesome presentation from Nick with COAD, which is Community Organizations and Active Disasters, and hoping to identify some possible partnerships for future disaster preparedness and recovery. On six-twenty-eight, OurSpace had their Arts Night for the, and how this community's playing all of the projects that they did, it was their last hurrah. Kuna also had another successful cleanup on seven-three. I got to attend the Fourth of July Jubilee, so hats off to the chamber and zero waste. I will be attending an Arcade House Partnership Board Meeting tomorrow and I'll report back next council meeting. There is a walk, Dan Burden Walk Audit, this Saturday, seven-twenty-two, from ten to twelve, it starts at the corner of Ninth and L, will finish at the Arcata Playhouse. Also, Jessica McGinty's Memorial on Friday, seven-twenty-one, from five to nine, at the Humboldt Bay Social Club, come to share stories and memories and it has been, it's a celebration, so the request is to wear bright colors, not black. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kimberly. I know I don't have too much to add. RCEA adopted a budget, that was about it at our last meeting and not till next week. I'll be back with them. And just to add, yeah, the Fourth of July Jubilee was wonderful, I had the opportunity to volunteer, there was a ton of people out having fun and it was a great day and the Crabs won, so.
So possibly you want to mention summer music and art on the plaza, okay.
Also, I'm on the Board of Humboldt Made, so I just want to mention that Friday Night Markets are still going on, they're going on till October, they're huge now, I know it's an eureka event, but there are a ton of Arcata-based businesses that are vending there. The theme this Friday night is Eighties Night, so I will be there volunteering and talking to all the businesses, there's lots of live music and great fun, so come on out, thank you.
So I just want to expand a little bit more on that walk with Dan Burden. So HCOG, the board that I, one of my assignments that I serve on is hosting him in collaboration with the other communities so that we can all share his wisdom and I don't, you know, he's focusing on K Streets and Eleventh Streets in the walk and I'm really, I'm kind of bummed that everybody left because there was a lot of concern about K Street being somehow tied in to the L Street couplet, which to my knowledge is absolutely not the case and that maybe we have forgotten and we aren't focusing on K Street. I live on K Street, I know the problems on K Street and it's not an accident that, you know, Dan is focusing on K and Eleventh, are very busy streets, so we do hear you, staff does hear you, and that's a great example of that. And there is continuing music and vendors and fun on the plaza on Sundays from eleven to four, there's always a band that starts at twelve and there's food also, lots of things to do down there, so just encourage people to check that out and that's it for me.
All right, and with that, we have our upcoming study session, I don't think the date was on here, August twenty-second, okay, good, I'm glad that's committed to my memory. So we'll see you guys here for the study session on Tuesday, August twenty-second, and I guess we'll have a council meeting before then too. So thank you, folks, and the meeting is adjourned.